Let's call this May 13th meeting of the school board to order. We'll start with the flag salute. Please, follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brett, will you lead us in prayer?
Father, we want to thank you for all of our students and staff who worked and attended our schools this past year. Please be with our graduates, who will be traveling on new endeavors and future career paths. To our teachers and staff, who must be thanked and appreciated for all of the hard work and dedication to all of our students at the Ponca City Schools. We would also ask you to take care of our retirees, who dedicated their lives to serving the Ponca City Schools and cared for the students of the district for so many years. We wish them well in their future endeavors. We thank them and will miss their presence. And also, please be with our men and women of the armed forces as they serve and protect this great nation. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Thank you Brett. Be seated, please. Next item will be roll call, Jan.
Dr. Kincaid.
Here.
Mr. Newsom. Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Trup.
Present.
Mrs. Simmershey.
Here.
Next item will be the presentation to retiring employees of Ponca City Public School District. We have eight certified employees that are retiring this year. These eight represent over 243 years of actual teaching. We have seven support people retiring with 161 years of service, and that represents over a 25-year average per person. I mean, that's remarkable. That is a lot of teaching. So with that, Shelley's going to actually give some individual recognition.
Lots of your service walking out those doors tonight, and we appreciate every second that you've devoted to this district and to our students. And for the annual retirement reception, we talk about your years of service, and we also ask your friends and gleaned some information that is on a more personal note. So be prepared for anything. All right, I am going to ask the retiree to come forward, and we're doing these in no particular order. Well, yes, we are alphabetical order, but not certified versus support. First up retiring is Ms. Cassie Bridges. Cassie, please come forward. We want everyone to... All right, Cassie has been an educator for 27 years, and all of her service has been with Ponca City Public Schools. Haven't branched out any, and we are thankful for that. She taught first grade at Liberty Elementary for nine years, and then moved to West Middle School to teach reading in 2001, and has just been there ever since. Cassie has this wonderful personality that students love. She is not afraid to sing to welcome her students. Can you demo?
Actually, I could.
Okay.
But I'm not.
I thought she might, knowing Cassie, she would. Most of you know, especially if you're at West, that she loves minions and decorates her room with them. She even claims she could be a minion.
I am one.
Oh, okay. You don't... She is a minion. Okay. Obviously, Cassie's great at building positive relationships with students and staff alike. Cassie is always fun on school trips, professional development, on school trip professional development opportunities where she exhibits her fun-loving personality. Well, she has a special talent of curing a headache, and she gives the best shoulder rubs. Cassie knows pressure points and is always willing to help a teacher out. So on Teacher Appreciation Week, I'm guessing we'll bring you back and we can do shoulder rubs. One little-known fact about Cassie is that she likes to go to the casino occasionally.
Oh, that's back in the day.
Okay. Well, back in the day, she used to tell her husband she was going to get a hamburger, but she was really going to the casino.
Barbecuing, too.
I think she was your comrade in that. Hey, but Cassie, the casino serves great hamburgers, right? Cassie, we appreciate your service. It's a huge Lost Star district.
Thank you.
Give Cassie a big round of applause. Next, we have Linda Broom. Linda has been a certified educator for 25 years. Three of these years were served in Texas, and all the rest were with Ponca City Public Schools. She actually began in the district as a special education TA. I didn't know that till I did a little research. And then she began as a science teacher at the senior high, and then moved to West Middle School to teach science in 1998, and has been there ever since. Linda was very active in OERB learning opportunities. She took the information she learned during this professional development and incorporated it into her lessons. She was actually named the OERB Home Room Featured Teacher in 2016. I remember when the news stations came out and videoed that. Now here's another not-so-well-known incident about Linda, and this is the fact that at once upon a time, Linda's class pet python escaped when she was cleaning its cage. This incident occurred about 20 years ago, and I'll have to tell you, the snake is still missing. For years, there were nightmares of the python showing up or dropping from the ceiling. But we've had quite a bit of turnover, so really, no one's worrying about the python's escape right now. So I did do some Googling on the lifespan of a python, and it's 30 years. So Linda, if the python shows up, we'll call you. We appreciate your service, Linda. Thanks for all you've done. Next is Cheryl Combs, and she is not here, but I do want to share the information about Cheryl. Cheryl has been a sped TA, a special education TA at the high school for 18 years. So without doubt, she knows many people at the high school and has seen many people come and go. She has a deep love for her students, and she always puts them first. She would even give away her own lunch if there were a hungry student. She worked really hard to make sure all the students not only completed their work, but enjoyed completing it. So she was quite an entertainer. I also know that Cheryl enjoyed the Am Buck's big toy at Lake Ponca as much as the kids, and there were often times we had to call her off the top of the big toy. She is the easiest lady in the world to work with because she believes this job is a ministry, and we appreciate Cheryl's service. We also have Sharla Cross, and she's with us tonight. Sharla? All right, Sharla has served as an education support professional for 18 years and was at the former alternative site, but moved to East Middle School as a Title I TA in 2005 and has been there ever since. Now, I might be off on my dates. Was I off on my dates? Okay. Sharla is a hard worker that will be missed greatly. We feel confident most of her retirement will be spent taking care of, actually spoiling, they say, your nephew Kayvon and her husband Brian. She said her job is to spoil Kayvon and then send him home. Sharla has many admirable qualities, but there are two that stand out. First, if you don't want to hear the truth, don't ask Sharla. Sharla is straightforward and honest, which is a trait that is in high demand. Secondly, she has a heart of gold. She develops relationships with students and is always encouraging them to strive for academic success. She always has food in her room for a student who missed breakfast or is very hungry by 7th hour. She's also been known to pay for computer or team fees for students who struggle to cover these expenses. One time, Sharla made a backpack for a student who did not have one. She has been an important part of our students' educational journey. She has an amazing heart and will be missed dearly at East and with Ponca City Public Schools. Thanks for your service, Sharla. Next, we have Ms. Barbara Davis. Barbara is retiring after 25 years as an Oklahoma educator. And guess where all the years have been? Right here with PCPS. She actually began her tenure as a home ec. teacher, as it was called back in the day, served as a counselor at the alternative school, was the teen pep coordinator, and after that, she became the lead principal at East Middle School. Then in 2016, she moved from 8th grade to pre-K and became the principal at the pre-K center. When Mrs. Davis was principal at East, she made it a point to personally greet every student that came to pre-enrollment face-to-face. She greeted them with a smile and a pencil and made sure they all knew East motto, which is?
Of course, it's learning is the only option.
Learning is the only option. Every day at lunch at East Middle School, she had deep conversations with students as they stood in line. Didn't take long before she knew every child's name. After moving to the pre-K center, I think Barbara found her true calling. She loves her little one and dotes on their successes. Something that is hard for me to believe is that she sings in the mic in the opening assembly. She sings like a bird in the mic. I mean, that takes some true talent to sing in a mic, and she welcomes the kids everything single day. She does all kinds of fun things to keep her students engaged and entertained. She has often been heard saying her job at the pre-K center does not seem like work. We won't tell anybody. After much contemplation and coaxing from her husband, Barbara has decided to travel and spend time with her grandchildren. And your husband told me at the retirement reception, he was sometimes kind of mean on Sundays and said, "Oh, you have to go to work tomorrow." Those days are numbered, Barbara. We appreciate your service. You've done an excellent job. Next, we have the first member of a husband-wife duo, which we have two husband-and-wife duos retiring, which is hard on the district, Ms. Diane DeGan. Diane is completing 39 years as an Oklahoma educator. Her first eight years in education took her to three districts in Oklahoma, Walters, Hilton, and Mangum, as she traveled with her coaching husband Larry. She and Larry joined the PCPS team in the fall of 1988. That's 31 years. Within the district, Diane has taught 3rd grade at Garfield, 4th grade at Trout, and then she joined the West team in 2006 as a reading teacher and has been there since that time. Diane is the quiet master teacher who is dependable and reliable. According to her principles, she is every administrator's dream teacher. Someone even described her as the reading teacher guru. One thing to note is that Diane's... If Diane sent a student to the office, the principal knew it must have been a big deal and took action immediately. When Diane... And this is just kind of a funny story. When Diane moved over from elementary to the middle school, the 6th and 7th grade reading teachers met as a team in their PLC, and Mrs. Cottle was the PLC chair, and she has since retired. And Diane is such the perfectionist, she wanted to make sure that she was listening to the 6th grade goals rather than the 7th grade goals. So she really worked hard to get it straight. One of the things a teacher did that if they were talking about 6th grade goals, the 7th grade teachers would cover their ears. They all thought it was funny, but Mrs. Cottle didn't think it was too funny. Upon retirement, Diane and her husband Larry have plans to hook up their camper and travel. She and Larry are plotting points to go see in their free time, but they will always be available to spend time with their grandkids. And I think your newest grandchild is here tonight. Thanks for your service, Diane. We appreciate you. Next, we have part two for her husband Larry. Larry DeGan. Larry is also completing 39 years as an educator. He was a coach. He spent his time in the same three districts before coming to Ponca City, as Diane did. And he actually joined PCPS in the fall of 88 as well. Coach DeGan always makes things fun. He coaches with passion and is student-minded. He wants students to grow and learn lifelong lessons. Coaching with him and being alongside him in FCA for the past year has been a wonderful experience. And that comes from one of your fellow coaches. Another coach said, "Coach DeGan is a true company man. Coach is loyal to Ponca City Schools, and more importantly, has a genuine passion for working with kids." Then, I actually, Larry, reached out to some of our longtime coaches to get some information. And one of the coaches that I sent an email to was Brad Parent, because I thought he's been around a long time. And when I sent him the email, he responded with a book. I didn't realize he was a senior in high school the year you came. I'm like, "What? I thought you were coaching." Brad said he was very fortunate to be the quarterback for the Wildcats when Coach DeGan coached football. Before each game, he would come by while I was stretching and say... Do you remember what you'd say? First snap, last snap, and every snap in between. He said it felt good knowing that you had his back. After graduation, Brad said he would come back and visit with Coach, and he found out he liked to put peanuts in his Coke. So that was a trick his dad taught him. So when he came back, he would bring the Coke and peanuts, and you would have your Coke and peanuts together while you were putting the future Wildcats through football drills. On a personal note, when my now-deceased coaching husband Joe Matlock and I came to Ponca City, Larry and Joe became fast friends, and Larry was held in high esteem by Joe Matlock. You know he loved you, Larry. On a separate note, Larry has been the rock that supports East and keeps everyone stable. True loss for our district, losing you and Diane. Give it up for Larry DeGan. Next, we have Jeff Denton. Jeff actually retired in November. He began working for PCPS in October of 1990, so more than 29 years ago. He was hired as the Child Nutrition Program/Finance Director, and then became the Child Nutrition Program Director in 2004. He actually retired in November of 2018, and we rehired him on a part-time basis in February of 2019. So we don't know how he enjoyed retirement. There have only been two directors in the history of the National School Lunch Program in Ponca City Public Schools, and Jeff is actually one of those. During his years as Child Nutrition Program Director, Jeff took on different personas to educate and amuse students and coworkers, and he still does. Here are a few of them. Santa Pig. Matilda the Pink Gorilla. Nutrition Ed, a dinosaur. Will Feadum, a radio character. Richard Simmons. That one made me laugh out loud. And Moon Ninja Cow Chef, a TV personality. He becomes whatever it takes to make people feel good about their jobs, the food they serve, and the students that experience it. Jeff hosted and produced several TV and radio shows, Okey Chef, Kitchen Cooking, and Kitchen Expedition, just to name a few. He is the only Oklahoman to win the National Fame Award and the Silver Plate Award, which is not school-specific. The award can go to a restaurant. He has authored and published four books and has performed speaking engagements at state and national conferences all over the USA. I will have to tell you, I am leaving out a few notable details, but some things are best left unsaid. Regardless of the unmentionables, Jeff has been an integral component in making our CNP program outstanding. Obviously, we think he's pretty good because we brought him back. We appreciate your service, Jeff. All right, next, we have Deborah Gooch. Deb Gooch joined Team PCPS in August of 2000, so she has completed 19 years with the district. Deb served as a TA at Roosevelt and Union, a receptionist at the high school, and then came to the Board of Education as Operations Secretary in 2014. I know Deb on a personal basis because she actually began as a TA when I was teaching at Roosevelt. She was in my classroom. Here's what I know about Deb. She has a strong work ethic. In fact, she will drum up something to do if she doesn't have a task at hand. Never idle hands with Deb. Because I know this about her, she has traveled with me to every site in which I worked in the district. Except I didn't work at the high school. Another thing I learned about Deb is that you never have to wonder what she is thinking. She always points out if something is not right with my appearance, like my hair, or if my outfit doesn't look like me, or if I have a blemish, or if my lipstick's smeared, or anything else I need to know about my personal appearance, which I always appreciate. Did I do okay tonight, Deb? Here's what's ironic. She points out when my appearance needs work because her office mates say, "When Deb first went to work in our office, she told her coworkers that she didn't know how to match up her own clothes." She would ask her husband if certain things went together or not. So Phil, are you still dressing, Deb? If not, she's learned to do it herself, and she looks pretty cute. Deborah makes all of us laugh. I believe a couple of her coworkers are going to miss the practical jokes either she plays on them, or the loud screeches she lets out when startled by a mouse, or a fake crow they plant for her to find in her desk area. And trust me, you know when she screeches out all over this building. Deborah's smile and laughter will be missed by all. One other thing that your colleagues pointed out is that you are directionally challenged. Don't talk directions with her because she has no idea what you're talking about. Okay, you've got to learn those directions on your retirement, Deb. Give it up for Deb Gooch. We have Amy Kurtz from West Middle School. Amy Kurtz has been an Oklahoma educator for 15 years, and all of these years have been with PCPS. She began teaching special ed. at the Alternative Center housed at Washington Pre-K. Then she moved to West Middle School to teach special ed. English, or ELA. She is always willing to try new things and adopt new methodologies for her students. She took time to tutor kids after school and was always an advocate for special needs students. She was the go-to person to run tough meetings because she always found a way to make sure parent and students' needs were heard. Amy can get through to some of the toughest kids. She started her career late teaching English at the Marlin Children's Home. She was able to find ways to engage students and get them to want to work for her because she made learning fun. There was one time when she told her class that they were going to read the book To Kill a Mockingbird. One of her students started laughing and asked, "Did the bird die?" Amy answered, "You need to read the book to find out." And the student replied, "Well, I think tequila would kill any mockingbird." When we asked Amy what her plans are for the future, she said she was not a planner. In fact, she had not even planned to be a teacher. She was driving by a university and decided she would go back to school to obtain a degree, and we are certainly glad that she did. She's been a great asset to our district. Thank you, Amy. Another husband-wife duo. Kim and her husband Mike are another husband-wife duo. The district really hates losing. We hate losing all of our retirees, but we know they go as a pair when they're married. Kim has been an educator for 33 years. She taught three years in Kentucky before joining the PCPS team in 1990. She began with PCPS, teaching math at East Middle School, and then began teaching advanced math and ACT prep at the senior high in 1999. And when I reached out to some of her colleagues, someone told me that Kim White is the teacher others want to be. If you have driven past the teacher's parking lot after school hours or on the weekends any time for the past 30-plus years, you will have seen Kim's car in the parking lot. She cares so much about her students' learning and has a fine-tuned sense of what each of her students know or don't know, and is constantly meeting with them before school, after school, during lunch, or any other time she can meet with them. In fact, one of your colleagues said they don't believe you've had a complete lunch period since the late 80s. When Kim retires, she will leave behind a gaping hole for not only our students, but also for our staff at Poe High. Because of her professionalism, commitment, and love of teaching, Poe High is a better place for having her all these years. Kim, her husband Mike, and Betsy Easley have planned and led the academic rally at Poe High for the last several years. And if you haven't attended an academic rally, it is quite a show. It's themed, it involves loud music, and it's interactive. Typically, we award over 400 awards to around 200 students in one hour. We're trying to get Kim and Mike to assist with the academic rally next year, and look at Mike shaking his head, "No." We would even pay you a small stipend. Kim said no right now, too, but I told Mr. Dilbeck, "Let's ask them again in December, once they have a little time off." She and Mike have 13 grandkids, and they will stay busy attending their events and staying active in their lives. Congratulations. We'll miss you, but we're happy for you on your retirement, Kim. Next is the husband of this duo, Mike White. Mike has been an educator for 40 years. He taught in Kentucky for eight years and three years in Ohio prior to joining the PCPS team in the fall of 1990. Throughout his service to PCPS, he has taught math at East, was counselor at the senior high, was a counselor slash math teacher at the senior high, and went back to East as counselor in 1997. At that time, he became the energy manager for the district. He is the person who leaves a little red note for you if you fail to turn off your monitor, adjust your thermostat, unplug all appliances, and shut down over major breaks. I know that when I was teaching at Roosevelt, no teacher wants to get that red note on their monitor. You left your monitor on, your thermostat was not turned down. But one morning, I came in and found a red note on my newly donated skeleton we used for science. Do you remember that? The note said...
...up against the door.
Yes, it was right... Yes, it was... Well, it wasn't purposeful. That was just the spot for it. But it was right by the thermostat. He left a note on the skeleton that said, "That thing scared me." Mike will be missed greatly. It may be years before we know just how much he does around East Middle School. He has been a mentor to every principal who has come through there. He has many years of wisdom and experience. He plans to spend his time with the grandkids and fishing, of course. Now, Mike, the academic rally offers on the table to you, too. Don't think we won't call you in December. We appreciate your service. Thanks for all you do. Enjoy your retirement. Next, we have Susan White. And I don't believe Susan's here. Is she, Randy? Okay, Susan has been with PCPS and has served as a school bus driver for 28 years. Can you imagine driving a bus for 28 years? Susan is a by-the-book and dependable person. She loves being a bus driver, and you can tell she cares for all her passengers on the bus. Susan was by-the-book for sure, so if you don't toe the line, she's going to let you know. She didn't write up a lot of students, as she handled it right then and there on the bus. Her writers all greeted her by the name of Mrs. White every morning, and she replied with their name every morning. What are we going to do without her, Randy? 28 years driving a bus, so we appreciate Susan, and we'll get her clock to her. Next, we have Caroline White. Caroline has been a teacher for 15 years, and all of these years have been with PCPS. Caroline has been with Ponca City Public Schools for 29 years. She began her tenure as a TA, a teacher assistant at Garfield, and then became the secretary there. In July of 2015, she became the central registration secretary. When Caroline started at the Registration Center, which is down at 111 West Grand, we housed Wildcat Academy there. And Carla Streeters are director at Wildcat Academy. And Caroline told Carla that she was not her secretary. She was the registration secretary. But by the time Wildcat Academy moved two years later, Caroline was an integral part of Wildcat Academy and did a lot of secretarial duties for Carla. She would do something for Carla, and Carla would remind her, "Caroline, you're not my secretary." And the funny thing was, when someone would call for Caroline and Carla took the message, Carla would tell Caroline, "I'm not your secretary." This is just on a personal note, inside joke, not sure what it is. Caroline has her own personal nurse. Her name is Nurse Cratchit. And Caroline is very good at hiding things from her... dot-dot-dot, she thinks. So Nurse Cratchit must know more than you think she knows. Would that be your daughter? I thought it might. Caroline, we appreciate your service. Good luck on that. Next, we have Louisa Williams. Louisa has been with PCPS since the fall of 1998, so 21 years. She began as a teacher assistant at Liberty and then became the secretary at Washington Elementary. When Washington merged with Roosevelt and moved over there, she became the secretary in 2005 at Roosevelt and has been there ever since. Louisa is one of those people that if anyone needs anything, she will find a way to help. She really doesn't want people to know, but she often pays for students' meals or field trip costs. She is very caring of others, and it is evident in her actions. She is kind to students, teachers, parents, and any other guest who is in the building. She likes to teach herself how to do things, and she never gives up until she figures something out. She's super organized, very conscientious, and has that never-give-up attitude, even if she has to do something three or four times. Louisa is a great mentor to all and is always good for a hug to anyone who may need a hug. Louisa, we appreciate your service, and I hope you enjoy retirement. And I think that's it for our retirees.
Say that again?
That's it for our retirees.
Again, thank you very much. These 15 people represent over 500 years.
Five hundred?
Wow.
Did you tabulate how many of those were with PCPS?
Uh, the big majority.
Big majority?
Almost all of them.
Hey, once you come, you never leave.
Okay, and you all are welcome to stay, but if I were you, I would get an early head start on my retirement. That's just me. Because I retired about 10 years ago, and I like it. Our next agenda item will be the presentation of Employee of the Month and the Friends of Education Awards. The first one will be the Certified Employee of the Month. That's Janice Branstadter, Washington Pre-K elementary teacher. And you don't get to retire.
Last presentation, Barbara.
My last time to get to do this, and I'm excited about doing this to recognize Janice. It's our privilege to have an opportunity to recognize Janice Branstadter as a standout teacher at Washington Pre-K. Janice is a very caring coworker and teacher. She's always available as a listening ear to offer sound advice as needed to her colleagues. She takes her job very seriously and is there to push her students when needed and to be a caregiver at other times. Many times, Janice is the last teacher to leave the building as she spends many hours planning her lessons, creating motivating learning activities, and organizing details in her classroom that provide opportunities for her students to feel important to the class membership. She is always attentive at meetings, shares ideas with others, and is interested in proving her pedagogy by attending professional development opportunities. We are proud to recognize Janice Branstadter as Ponca City Public Schools Certified Employee of the Month of May.
Our next award will be for the Support Employee of the Month, and that's Kai'Se Goodno, West Middle School Child Nutrition.
Kai'Se Goodno, production manager for West and the elementary-serving sites, is described by staff members as a very hard worker with a great attitude. Kai'Se is steadfast and faithful to his responsibility, and is always the first one to arrive early in the morning. And by morning, we mean even before the chicken or chicken strips get up. Pause for laughter. If you know Kai'Se. His energy level stays high while maintaining a sharp and cutting sense of humor, which is helpful to cope with everyday stress of supervising over 3,000 meals every day. His sharp wit and verbal observations often take a tough situation and turns it into a fun and manageable experience. The staffs of West Kitchen and the other CMP colleagues are all very important to Kai'Se, and he shows it by being supportive and helpful in any way he can. This year has been a tough year on the West staff because of the death of a staff member, as well as other issues at the site. Kai'Se's caring attitude and support for his staff is evident on a regular basis. Kai'Se is a great example of Team PCPS and a great manager, and we are very proud to name him the May Support Employee of the Month.
Our final award tonight will be the Friends of Education that goes to Walmart, our West Middle School pipe partner.
Walmart has been selected as this month's Friend of Education. Specifically, Kailani has been a huge help for us. They have come through countless times to help West Middle School, staff, and students. West is very rarely, if ever, told no by Walmart. They do a great job of helping with our student supplies, staff appreciation events, and teacher needs. Just this year alone, they have provided West with a Walmart community grant to help pay for a student project, provided food and drinks for staff events, and will feed all of West's staff on their Olympic Day. They have also helped provide staff appreciation gifts, binders, and earbuds for our students. Walmart has always been a great pie partner for West, and we truly appreciate everything you do for West and our community.
Three award winners will go out in the hall. You don't know it, but you're gonna get your picture in the Ponca City paper, so...
And on our website and Facebook.
And on the website. So we'll get your picture made out there. And now, our next item will be the West Middle School presentation, the Monarch Project, which will be Mercedes Sixkiller, Kyra Allison, Jackson Northcutt, and Isabella Hazelton. Did I miss anybody?
All right.
I brought with me some of the brightest students in the district today. And several years ago, we were given a grant by the foundation to build a monarch garden out in front of our bus stop. And so these are some of the kids that have maintained that for two years now. And I'll let them present on why we do this.
We're here today to bring awareness to the fact that the monarchs are dying out and how we can help to save them. That's what a monarch looks like. These are the different stages of the monarch butterfly. You have the monarch egg, and then you also have the caterpillar. It has two sets of what looks like an antennae because of a predator attack. It will get confused on which side, so it has time to escape. You have the chrysalis, which is when it's forming and changing into the butterfly. And then you have the adult monarch.
There is a less likelihood that the next generation will ever see a monarch butterfly if the numbers keep spiraling down. So the more our community helps out and gets plants and leaves the butterflies alone, you can help save them and increase the population.
This is a graph that shows the percentages of decrease and increasing due to many different reasons. You can see the trend of how it goes up and then lowers greatly. I personally hope that these numbers will increase before too long, so that way the monarchs will not go extinct, and at the time, we go graduate. This is the different reasons of why the monarchs have gone away in the past. We have farmers spraying their crops with all sorts of pesticides, which the butterflies will go and land on the crop trying to pollinate them, and they will die from the pesticides. There are many people taking out the plants so they don't have anywhere to lay their eggs. And then there's also many freezes that can happen during the migration, which can kill
This is the migration grounds of where the monarchs go and leave, and this is also the way to track the places we need to make sure there is milkweed so they can lay eggs and whatever else they need to do, such as have protection over themselves and their
As it goes on through the migration pattern, some of them stay and die through there. They may also just continue on. Not all butterflies make it back to their original migration grounds. They stay in different warm areas to survive the winter. These are the plant stages of the monarch, the Scolepius crassivica, which is the only plant that monarchs will lay their eggs on. There's the egg stage, and then this is the grown stage, which we have planted outside of the school, like Mr. Webb has said.
The Scolepius curusivica is a poisonous plant, so when the butterflies eat it, they become poisonous to the birds that try to attack them, so before, they are protected from the birds. Female lays during her life, but the average is probably from 100 to 300 eggs. The eggs hatch about four days after they are laid.
We have planted the plants. We have sent many home to make sure the butterflies have a place to lay their eggs. And so we have made many of them in Mr. Webb's class. You can buy them at Walmart, and you can help us help this city get plants planted for the monarchs.
This year, the kids planted and gave away over 850 plants at our building. And so, they did a good job.
To both students and teachers?
They gave them to students, teachers, and previous students, and grandmas, and grandpas, and people that came to us. Anybody that wanted some.
So we'll have plants all over Ponca City?
Yes.
And monarchs.
And monarchs.
Very good, thank you. Next on the agenda, we have no public comments, so we'll go right to the superintendent's report with potential board discussion.
Hey, pretty quick and easy. I just want to give you an update on graduation. Graduation is scheduled this Friday, May 17, 8:00 PM at Solons Stadium. However, if we have weather issues, we will move graduation to Robson Fieldhouse. And as of this 10 seconds, it looks like the weather might be coming in late Friday, but this is Oklahoma, so you never know. This event will be livestreamed and may be viewed on our district Facebook page. We'll make a decision probably about noon on Friday whether we're going to be at Solons or Robson. We do have practice at 1:30, so we're gonna have to know where we're going to practice on Friday. This year, we have 307 graduates. Four summer school students will go ahead and walk with graduation. We have four students who have three credits or less that they need to obtain, and that's doable throughout the summer. We have seven that will come back, and we will try to graduate them by September 15, so they will be coming back. Just to give you a little bit of information, our valedictorian this year is Joshua Fairbanks. We have co-saludatorians Shay Burden and Catherine Parr, and these are the students who have the highest weighted cumulative GPAs of the senior class. And this is measured from freshmen through the first nine weeks of the second semester of their senior year. And here are our top 10. You'll probably know them. Josh Fairbanks, valedictorian, Shay Burden, Katie Parr, saludatorian. We have Samantha Stobie, Priyanchi Patel, we call her Priy Patel, Alyssa Perdugal, Jeffrey Crossland, Hogan Watts, Kate Kane, and Noah Willis. I tell you what, it has been senior activity after senior activity these last few days. Last Sunday, we had the Top 10 Tea, which we honored these students. They got to bring their family with them, and they received their Top 10 stole. So at graduation, you will see them with their Top 10 stole. Scholarship Night was the following Tuesday on May the 7th. We presented more than $100,000 in local scholarships alone. The Elks Club, just different scholarships throughout Ponca City. I believe Mr. Dilbeck told me we have a total of almost $3 million in scholarships for our seniors this year. On Wednesday, the 8th, we had the senior lunch and the senior assembly, final assembly together, did a slideshow. This past Friday, we took the seniors to walk the halls at their elementary school. We played Pump and Circumstance over the loudspeaker. We load them up in buses and take them from sites, and some of our kids were really reluctant. They were like, "Oh, no," because rumor was that was senior skip day. And Mr. Dilbeck told them they'd come to walk the halls, that they would be exempt from finals, so they showed up, and then they wanted to walk at every hall. They just didn't want to walk at theirs. They knew somebody everywhere. This Thursday night, we have Baccalaureate, 7:00 PM in the Howell Auditorium. Graduation is obviously on Friday night. Regardless of where we have graduation, board members, you will meet in the hospitality room at 7:30 in Robson, which is on the northwest corner of Robson. Parking has been established for you between the old boys locker room and the baseball field. Your name is on a list. And then after graduation, we have the Great Escape at the Phillips 66 Atrium. It's from 11:00 PM. Doors will lock and stay locked until 3:00 AM. There's lots of prizes, games, food, and it's good, safe, fun for our students. Our local patrons donated $15,000 in prizes for the Great Escape. There are some really nice prizes, and they were told at the senior assembly, "If you come to Great Escape, you will win a prize." So busy time for seniors right now. Any questions about graduation?
Nope. Glad to see you showed up, Don. Okay, next item will be 5.12 and 3, which is the consent agenda. We talked about a lot of things in our finance meeting, so a few of the highlights were a lot of activity, fund activity for the drill team, yearbook. We had an $800 expenditure for helping the local lines on some vision screening for pre-kindergarten through 5th grade. Establishment of the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance, again, school pictures, no cost to the district. The second year of three years for both Wildcat Academy and Poe High for the, what we used to call the E2020 program, now it's Ingenuity. to call the E-2020 program, now it's Ingenuity, it's the online courses. Had an insurance claim, a new payment method, make it a little bit easier to pay for field trips, technology fees, yearbooks, et cetera, for the parents of the students. Some general fund expenditures to help in some bloodborne pathogens, child abuse, autism, a few little things like that. Let's see, what else on the list? We also talked about a co-op with both, I don't know, was that another? I think that may be an agenda item here by itself, to co-op with St. Mary's and Lutheran.
Yes.
I think that's a separate agenda item. Couple of royalty issues, Poe High Orchestra, no royalty fee for using the logos on some tumblers. And then Equity Bank has agreed to our payment schedule to put the logo on some debit cards. So with that, if there are no questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve 5.12 and 3.
I still move.
Motion from Don, second from David. Any comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Motion carries. Item 6.1A is the budget amendments. Then there's a lot of encumbrances, building fund, child nutrition, long range planning for the bond issues, construction bonds, gift funds. We have change orders, budget analysis, bond reports, treasures reports. Again, Don and I talked about these with the members of the finance committee. So unless there's any question on those, I'd ask for a motion to approve 6.1.
I still move.
Got a motion from Don, second from Nancy. Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.2A and B are both contracts with Burnett Security. It was a very minor increase with Burnett this time. The actual bill went down a little bit because there's a few fewer school days. This is to collect money from the various schools, take it into the banks for us, and then actually the security services at the high school. So the total bill is actually a little bit less than last year for both A and B. Do I have a motion for those?
You're going to go through all of them?
Okay, you'll go through all of them, okay. C is an agreement with Learning Science International. This is an unfunded mandate to meet the TLE requirements. It's $20,000, which is the same as last year. D is an agreement that we spent a real amount of time on. It has to do with our refresh program for the Chromebooks for 3 or 4 grade schools, Union, Roosevelt, Garfield. I think Pre-K was in there too, and the high school. The problem personally that I have was that the laptops for the teachers and the desktops for the support staffs were really big increases. And the reason the increases are coming, they're phasing that type of technology out and they're going for something else. I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to vote for these, but I'm going to ask Jason to, before next year, to maybe look at other alternatives, so we won't have to go through another 60, 70% increase in some of our existing technology. So with that said, any questions on D? We talked a long time about it, Don and I did. E is an agreement with Gary Brack and our attorney. It's my understanding this is the same agreement as last year, same agreement in pay. F is just a contingency agreement with RFR, the Attorneys for Legal Services, and it's $10,000 encumbrance. G is an agreement with Filtered Net Doing Businesses Andrews Network Enterprise. Has to do with software content and web content filters. This replaces Lightspeed, who was our previous provider of this service. But Jason did a really good job and got us like a $35,000 a year savings to switch companies on this. H is replacing 45 Promethean boards at Union, Garfield, and Roosevelt. It was a pretty healthy increase, but the problem that we had is they no longer make the 65-inch Promethean boards that we had before. We're having to buy 75-inch Promethean boards, and they're also a little more robust in their features and technology than the previous ones. I is an agreement with Hindemann Enterprises Doing Businesses Hindemann Lawn Care for District Lawn. Last year, they mowed about half the places. Garcia mowed the other half. Garcia elected not to bid this year, so we want to give all the business, the majority of business. We'll still retain, Brett's people will retain a little bit for some of the buildings, but the majority of all schools will be mowed by Hindemann. J, K, and L are agreements with independent contractors for speech and language services. These are positions that we would like to hire. We just can't find anybody. So we're having to go to outside independent contractors for these services. They're all pretty close to the same price. M is an agreement with the Recplex, Recplex, I guess is the new name for the old YMCA, for use of the swimming pool. It's $15,000 a year. I think that our last full year there was $15,400, so this is basically the same price. N is an agreement with Evans and Associates. The way I understand this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brett, when we built the concert hall, we tore up some roads up there, so we're having to replace the roads. But instead of just putting them back with a 2-inch overlay, we're doing a better job building a sturdier, better road. We're splitting roughly the cost with the city. I think our part is 45%. The city's is 55%. We didn't know about this, so Kyler Construction could not really bid on it. So the funding for this is coming out of the contingency money that you're going to see somewhere down in here that we're going to get back.
Hey, on that, those two water puddles by the front of it?
Yep. I'm going to let Brett talk about that one, our sidewalk issues.
Is that on us or is that on the city?
Well, C, Esther Walking Trail. We were told not to damage that walking trail. It was not damaged, it isn't much. It is on our leased portion of the property, but it's not our responsibility, as we know. But those were the two areas that belonged to the drive that used to go in around there. And that's why they're lower, because they went down to the level of the drives. But once we put our concert hall there and leveled everything up and got rid of it, they remained low where the drive was, but everything else was raised. So I talked to the city about it. We looked at it. We told them you've got an issue here with that water puddling. There's no drain. So they know about it. So at this point, it's not on us, it's on them. So that's kind of where we stand with it. Something will probably have to be done with it. I'm not sure at this point what the city's decision will be.
It's pretty hard to, if it's been a rainstorm, it's almost impossible to get into the concert hall with getting your feet wet, out getting your feet wet on both the east and the west sides.
Why are all those sidewalks marked? They got white marks all the way in the front there.
The city is, soon as school is out, they're going to begin their part of the concert hall drop-off project. We purchased some bollards to be put out there. They're not, they're cutting the curb away and leveling everything down to the street level and making it cool in, so we can drop off handicapped people or anybody else needs to be dropped off. And the bollards are going to be there as protection for people on the sidewalk. So that's what they're doing soon as school's out. Also, after school's out, that window between that date, the 17th and the 28th of June, is they're willing to do that work and all of that drive work, parking and driveway arrangements.
So we wait on the sidewalks to see what they're going to do on the two?
Probably depends on how many complaints they get from the people using the walking trail after it rains. But yeah, there's not really much we can do about it. Okay, item O is an agreement to replace 243 cameras with 80 much better cameras, better vision, better quality at Poe High, East Middle School, West Middle School, and Washington Pre-K. There's 243 cameras being replaced with 80. P is the software to run those new 80 cameras. So I think finally that covers all of them, Don. Did I miss any?
No.
So with that said, if there's not any comments or questions, ask for a motion to approve 6.2 in its entirety.
I move to accept 6.2 in its entirety.
Motion from David? And a second from Judy. Comments or questions? Call for the vote.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
I do have a question, real quick. Can I ask a question?
Okay, push.
On N, what we're fixing, that was damaged due because of rebuilding?
Yeah, we tore up some roads.
We, as in the contractors tore up the roads?
Yes, but they didn't know what they were going to tear up when they built it. So instead of adding it to their bid to repair it, we've just taken the money out, our share of the $45,000 or whatever it is, we're taking it out of the contingency.
Okay.
I think we're going to see in a minute, there's like a $282,000 contingency they're giving us back, so we will take money from it to pay for it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Basically, our cost is $24,579.
Twenty-four, okay.
Thank you.
65 cents.
Aye. Zimmerstein?
Aye. 65 cents.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.3, consider and take action to accept bids for the Howell Elevators to secure entry auditorium seating and the West Middle School Auditorium. Since we were a little bit late getting some of this information, Brett, why don't you explain what we're doing here?
Well, basically what you're doing is just approving the bids that we got. You receive, I believe you receive the, the, so the bids that we're taking in are going to include your total. GMP is all the way down to the bottom, which is not going to be approved tonight, which would include the general conditions, bonds, insurance, and those things. But you'll be able to see what it's probably going to be whenever they ask for approval for GMP. So tonight, you're just going to be approving the bids. There are several alternates, pending approval, demolition, seating, flooring. We put the seating that's in West Middle School and as well as at the Howell Auditorium as an alternate. We did that so we had choices, because we weren't sure how the prices were going to come in. So that's why they're separated into two packages for each site. We're recommending taking those, of course. What we're not recommending in this whole process is to take the elevator. The elevator came in about three times higher than what the initial estimates were. So I'm not going to recommend putting an elevator in. It was going to go into the school year anyway, but it just became way costly. We had, we didn't have any bids for the elevator, as a matter of fact. At that point, I talked to Gary Brack, and we could negotiate a price for that bid, for that price with Tissin Cruff or Schindler or whatever other elevator company that we were dealing with. But they decided to turn in a bid that was three times higher than the estimate. I don't know why that is. It was a little confusing to us, so that's the recommendation not to do it. We'll gather our stuff and we'll do it next summer, and hopefully we'll get more than three bids or somebody.
I do have one question for Rick.
I can answer any questions.
From you guys, the ballistic glass, where's that going? Is that in the main room of the high school?
It's going to go in the entry. So when you walk in, the first two sets of double doors, those are going to remain the same. There's a second set of entry doors going into the lobby itself. All of the ballistic glass and the ballistic frames will be in that area as well as for the security.
I guess I forgot we hadn't done those. Because that was done, we put those in a long time before that stuff came out, so. So just the inner part of those doors or?
They don't create a, they don't create a, they won't be.
Yeah, okay, that's all. I just want to make sure that's where it was at. I just missed it, probably in one of the meetings, so.
Okay, thank you. Brett, a question I have. You're asking us to approve the 57306, the 12544, the 290217, which by the way, is West and the high school getting new seats. Both of them. How will you, if you're kicking out the elevator for the time being, how will you determine the bond, insurance, contractor's fee, CM fee? Those numbers will all change then, the contingency?
Correct. The general conditions down here at the bottom, the bonds and insurance actually, if you total them all up, the bonds and insurance and the contingency and the CM fee won't change that much, because what is not included in the estimated GMP is anything that is shown in red right here. If we don't have it marked recommended for approval and that is bid package is not recommended, it has not been included in the total. It's only shown on there to be able to see what items we are going to.
So the general conditions, bond, insurance, contractor's contingency, and CM fee are accurate on here?
Correct. There will be a little bit of change.
There will be an addition a year from now or whenever we do the elevator for those.
Yeah, there will be a little bit of a change in the general conditions. It'll go down, just simply not knowing what you all decide to be confident, what you decide on the elevator. There was some, there were dollars in the general conditions for a temporary structure to build around the elevator should it go into this project. Since it's not, that will be taken out. So at the June board meeting, you'll see a reduced cost in that, which will reduce some of these a little bit.
A little bit. And the timing on this, this is all supposed to be completed before school starts in August, other than the elevator?
The areas will be, the seating will probably not be. We will put, we will, at West is done before school, but the Howell Auditorium may not be. We're so far into this thing, it's a time issue with getting the seats ordered in here. So it'll go into the school at least.
So I'll go ahead and let the contracts, you all approve the seating, go ahead and get those on order. The seats at West are 90 days out from approval, once they are approved to get them here to start installation. And then the Howell Auditorium seats are 120 days. So we'll just have to coordinate that around schools.
So I think you're going to demo everything, wait for the chair?
Is yet to be determined with the principals and the folks whether we want to go ahead and do that now, because it's going to be on a day.
I would think that'd be the best time to do, when there's no school, where they can get in and get those stuff out of the school and get it done and set on it.
But this new school year, what the schedule is, the kids can.
We're really going to need it at West when school starts, not so much in the Howell. But it sounds like that you probably can get that done, because a lot of our kids meet in the, at West.
You could always use the concert hall if you had to.
Right, we have some alternative options over at the high school.
As an auditorium.
And the kids don't meet in the auditorium at the high school, but they do at, do at West. It's more critical.
West is a little bit more critical. I think if the worst comes to worst and it's not quite ready, they can meet in the gym day.
We can.
So it's not a lost cause.
They'll be thrilled to have new seedings, though, they're flexible.
I just think it'd be better off overall, just get, get gutted, get it cleaned out so it won't be so nasty. That part for the kids when they're at school.
So we're basically approving everything except the 356 number?
Yeah. I'll move for approval.
Okay, I have a motion from Don to approve it. A second? David?
Yeah.
A second from David. Comments, questions? Stephanie, Rick, anybody got anything else?
I do firmly believe that waiting a year will save you 2/3 of the cost of what that is. And I still have not received an answer on why that costs us that way. The gentleman who helped us write the scope, actually to put the bid packages together, the architect actually used to design it and gave us a quote of $120,000 for the work, is the one that provided the $321,000.
No competition, huh?
Well. Call for the vote.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Motion carries. 6.4, consider and take action on change order 2.01. These are the ones we really like. We're going to get $282,625 and 34 cents back. So I want a motion to get that money back.
I move to get it back.
David moved.
Going to a deciding.
Second from Nancy?
Yes, yes.
And a second from Nancy. We're not even going to discuss it. Call for the vote.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Good. Okay, 6.5 and 6.6 are co-op agreements with Lutheran and St. Mary's for 7th and 8th grade sports. I'll probably miss them. There's cross-country, track, golf, football, volleyball.
Softball.
Softball.
Tennis.
Tennis.
Motion approved.
Think, think, think of them all. We got a motion. Do I have a second?
Explain it.
Explain it? This allows Lutheran and St. Mary's kids that don't go to public school to participate in our school-sponsored 7th and 8th grade sporting activities.
If they don't have that sport. If they don't have that sport at their own side.
I didn't say basketball, because most schools have basketball.
Actually, St. Mary's reached out to us in the winter of last year. They had a couple of kids that were interested in tennis and golf, but they had not previously done so.
It was in track, was it not, track?
In track.
Yeah.
So does.
Wrestling's on there too.
Okay, so they're equal, one-on-one, kid to kid. It's not, likes the problem we got in the softball last year.
Nope, and we've changed our practice as far as junior high goes. If we want to develop more athletes in a program, we're not going to cut kids at the junior high. Everybody that comes out is going to make the team. That doesn't mean that everybody travels or everybody gets a uniform or whatever, so.
But Lutheran and St. Mary's are equal with public school kids on all the tryouts?
There's no tryouts in junior high. This is just junior high.
Yeah, and if they're good enough to get a jersey, they'll get a jersey. If they're not good enough, they won't get a jersey.
They should just come to public schools and it'll all clear it up.
What'd you say, Nancy?
Just come to public schools and you don't have to do this. You can be part of our school.
No, Newsom.
I'll tell you here.
We need a second.
Second it.
What?
We have a second from David. Any other discussion on it?
What advantage is this for us to do this?
They're going to be our students in two years.
We are students.
Devote, no.
We'd like to have them right then.
As students.
Like having them in 7th and 8th.
Robin, are we voting on these separately?
No, we'll vote, let's vote on both of them together. Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
No.
And Dr. Kincaid?
6.7, consider and take action on proposed executive session for the following purposes. Discuss employment of assistant principals, possible termination, reassignments, resignations, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report that was in our packets. To discuss confidential conversation with the board's attorneys concerning pending claims and litigation for executive sessions. I have, need a motion for executive session.
I'll motion.
Motion from Nancy, a second from Judy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. We're now going to executive session. Recital by the board president that minutes of executive session were kept by the board, minutes clerk, and will remain confidential. 6.10, consider and take action on the renewal of the following assistant principals, Delana, Christina, and Sean at the high school, Kevin at West, and Dawn Mills at Lincoln. Do I have a motion to approve 6.10?
I motion.
I have a motion from Nancy.
Second.
And a second from Judy. Roll call.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup? Aye.
Motion carries, 6.11, consider and take action on recommendations for termination, reassignments, resignation, and employment of personnel that was on the personnel sheet. To have a motion to approve. Have a motion from Don, second from Nancy. Call for the vote.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
And now what you two have waited on forever, new business.
We do have new business.
We do have some new business. Should we approve the contract for Rick Scott Construction? Why don't you just explain to us, Brett, what all this is about?
Of course, as you know, we've been doing the insurance claim for our roofs. And that is moving along very nicely. I may actually approve the estimate that presented by our public adjuster for about $6.4 million. That is for the emergency repairs of the high school, east and west. There's still all the rest of the roofs, and this claim is coming about in phase 2, but this gets us started right away. The only way to get it started even sooner than that is to get a contract with Rick Scott Construction as a CM to run the project. And the insurance company is, that covers them. But they need to get started with a contract so they feel comfortable in the subs, which is the roofers and electricians and weight bags people, so they can order materials and get going as quickly as possible during the summer and that's what gets our out. It's the standard seating contract that they've been doing for us for a long time. It just includes the roofing part of this emergency repair.
So Rick Scott Construction is not actually going to do the repairs. They're just going to oversee the subs, the bids, et cetera.
Yeah, it's a, it's a general contracting.
You're going to put it out for bids?
Very, no.
No, sir. The, under the emergency portion of it, the roofer, the plumbing, the heating, and air electrical have been selected. We receive pricing from them. It's in the estimate, and we're ready to go.
I'm just curious, who is the roofer? Were they out of?
Corio Roofing, I have others they.
That's the ones that came and talked to us.
That's a group that met with us.
Is this paid for by insurance?
Yes.
Oh, all of it?
I made the motion to approve.
And I will second it.
Got a motion from Don and a second from Nancy. Any other comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Trup?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.